Hello?
Your sound on?
Hello? Yeah, now there's, yeah. Is it ready?
You sure we can do this? You sure we can do this like this?
Yeah, it's the public hearing.
Okay.
It's ready. He's ready.
Good evening. We're getting ready to start our county council meeting. Today's date is January 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll, let me read this first. Please be advised, in an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 or coronavirus, the upcoming Williamsburg County Council meeting will allow a limited number of 30 people from the public along with members of county council, media, and required staff in the chambers. Mask or face coverings will be required. Public access will be provided by live video stream and can be viewed at the Williamsburg County website at www.williamsburgcounty.sc.gov and www.facebook.com/WilliamsburgCountyGovernment. The public may also join the council meeting by dialing telephone number 1-877-309-2073, and the access code is 590380589. At this time, we will begin our public hearing. So the floor is open now, and we are in public hearing. We are in public hearing. Any comments, questions? Public hearing? Yes, Mr. Jameson?
I think you need to read the purpose of the public hearing for the public that may not have a copy.
Okay, right, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, this public hearing is in reference to ordinance number 2021-21, and this is an ordinance authorizing the amendment to agreement for development for joint county industrial park dated April 24th, 1995, as amended by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Berkeley County, South Carolina, in order to expand the boundaries of the joint county industrial and business park to include certain property owned by Century Aluminum of South Carolina, Inc., and other matters relating thereto. So now, we are open for public hearing. Any comments? Any comments on doing this public hearing? Going once. Twice. Hearing none, we declare public hearing closed. Now we'll begin our regular county council meeting. We would like to call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask that we have the invocation by Councilman Drucker.
Drucker?
Floyd.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Floyd. I was looking at him saying Drucker.
Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just bow before you as your humble servant, Lord. We ask you, as we enter into the new year, that you guide this council and that the decisions we make be pleasing in your sight, to your glory and to the betterment for citizens of this county, Lord. Now, Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight, take care of us, get us all home safely. We ask all these blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, amen. Now, we need approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from January 10th, 2021.
So move.
I'd properly move in second that the minutes be approved from January 10th, 21. So all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, same. Ayes have it motion carried. Now we have the next item of business is the third reading of an ordinance number 2021-21. This is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to agreement for development for joint county industrial park dated April 24th, 1995, as amended by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and Berkeley County, South Carolina, in order to expand the boundaries of the joint county industrial and business park to include certain property owned by Century Aluminum of South Carolina, Inc., and other matters relating thereto. What do I hear on the third reading?
Motion approved, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, motion there here, second? I properly moved to second that we approve that. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, same. Ayes have it motion carried. All right, second reading, we have none. Again, this is first reading titled only, "The Issuement and Ordinance Authorizing and Providing for the Issuements of a Waterworks and Sewer System Improvement Revenue Bond Anticipated should note. Series 2022 or such other appropriate series designation Mazone Water Project of Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and in an amount not to exceed $3,151,000. Authorizing the county supervisor and the chair of the county council to determine certain matters relating to the note, providing for form and details of the note, providing for the payment of the note, providing for the disposition of the proceeds thereof, and other matters relating thereto." First reading? Motion?
So move.
All right, all right, so move. So first reading, so ordered. Again, title only. First reading of an ordinance, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of a waterwork and sewer system improvement revenue bond, series 2022 or such other appropriate series designation Mazone Water Project of Williamsburg County, South Carolina, in the amount of $3,151,000. Authorizing the county supervisor and chair of the county council to determine certain matters relating to the bond, providing for form and details of the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, providing for the disposition of the proceeds thereof, and other matters relating thereto. First reading? What I hear? Motion?
So move.
All right, motion for first reading, so be it, it's ordered. We have a resolution 2022-01. A resolution authorizing Williamsburg County and the Barano Public Utilities Company, Inc., thereafter referred to as BPU, enter into a fourth amendment, amended franchise agreement with the BPU for the expansion of the franchise area as specified in the fourth amended franchise agreement, and extend, extended the third amended franchise agreement and additional three years or until May the 21st, 2025. That, what do I hear on that resolution?
So move.
All right. Second? Second? Our second, so moved in second that we adopt and approve this resolution, 2022-01. County supervisors' report. Is Mr. Caesar may not here? He's not here? Okay, well, maybe we have another, something for you to see, and perhaps when we get through this last item, he may be here, and we'll let him do his presentation at that time. So at this time, we have a short video that we would like for you to view. Mr. Jameson, is it ready? Is it set up and ready to go?
Hi.
How you doing?
Good, I'm Investigative Brown, Sheriff's Office, and I have Chief Deputy Cumby and Lieutenant Dernmoy just present with me. In December, we did an impaired driving awareness video, and it was for, I'm sorry.
I was asking you, speaking to Mike?
Yes, sir. So it was for impaired driving prevention. The actors, the majority of the actors were county employees. The first responder agencies that participated was the Sheriff's, Souths and Detention Center, Williamsburg County Fire Department EMS, Williamsburg County Coroner's Office, Williamsburg County E911, Air Reach Medical Helicopter, King Street Fire Department, South Carolina Highway Patrol, Adams Lifelink. Other businesses in the county that participated were Doritos Mexican Restaurant, The Town of King Street, Foxworth Tires, and Mike's Painting Body. And so, we're here to present the video to allow you all to watch it first before we post it on our social media.
Okay, thank you. I haven't seen it yet, but I heard it says great, is, is that true?
I hope you all like it, we'll find out.
Thank you.
Tori, hurry up, we're gonna be running late for school.
Mommy, I'm brushing my hair. Today started out just like all the rest, but it won't end the same.
Williamsburg County, now what can I help you?
Just like a star across my sky, just like an angel of the page, you have appeared to my life. Feel like I'll never be the same. Just like a song in my heart, just like oil on my head. Every year, more than 10,000 people die due to drunk driving. Over 1 million people are arrested every year for drunk driving.
How about them cowboys?
You done lost it.
You know, what's your thing?
Hey, this, hey, salute.
Party, man.
Ow!
Ah!
Yeah.
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 You got it, huh?
Yeah, you know, you got it.
I got this, I got this. You got it, I say, I'm gonna get you back to saying.
Shit, bro.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, one, two, three, hit me, dog.
Come on, and we're gonna jump.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh.
Eps.
Look, yeah.
Not two.
Oh.
Oh, there you go.
He got it.
Oh.
You got it, you got it.
Yeah.
We good.
We good, buddy, we good.
All right.
You, you guys.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
He got it.
He got it.
Baltimore fan.
You know.
Yeah, Baltimore fan.
You know, come on, yeah, you Baltimore fan.
Ha ha! Good, man, good, good.
One?
No, this, this.
I'm gonna take that.
Mmm, mmm.
You know what? We have a great time tonight, boys.
That's what we're gonna get to, man.
Yeah.
Tori, how was your day in school?
It was good, but there was this one girl that really wanted to be my friend. She had really dark hair, and her name was Katie, because I had this.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got it, hey. You came, man? Man, you good, bro. You alright? Good. No, you need to chill out. Hey, pay attention.
She tried to steal it from me, so that made me a little upset, but I got it back, and she was super duper mean.
Oh, really?
Bro, hey, bro. You driving too fast. Man, you driving too fast, bruh. And I told you, I got it, man.
Mama, I hungry.
You hungry, what do you want to eat?
I want some shrimp.
The shrimp, huh?
Yeah.
So you want seafood today?
Let's go to shrimp today. What you gotta taste for? Other than shrimps?
We're going to that, please. Um, what you got?
A shrimp and a french fries.
What's with your french fries?
I like burger king.
Burger king?
I got the car. Three, two, go!
Williamsburg County, now what can I help you?
Oh, my God, I would like to report an accident. I can run up on the accident off of Stallion Drive, it's right here by the football field.
Okay, how many people involved, man?
Two cars, and four people in one car, and three people in another car, and they're like 500.
Seventeen percent of all traffic deaths among children involve alcohol.
Oh, wait, yeah. We got that, there you go.
105, 1225. 1248, 10K, 1021, and 28. 30, 314. 8, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
I'll never get to go to prom, or have my dad bump me down the aisle.
8, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Always wanted to ride in a helicopter, but I get to fly it different way now. An Indian drive-in kills one person every 15 minutes.
My man. Don't go on that date, break the call, it's sick.
They got hair, they got hair.
Hey, look at that, I'm ready.
Let me bang that, uh, the light switch in the room. Come on, man.
Be good up on the court, man.
Tell you how long it's been?
Good, sir.
Good, sir. What was he being brought in for?
Yes, sir, I'm being charged with felony DUI, involved in this, sir.
I didn't know that. Okay. All right, all right, undo your hands. You may walk in. All right, we just stuck it in your mix. We'll go ahead and get you dressed up.
I don't, I don't want to switch to no man, and it's empty.
All right, you can just come on out, step on here, this great board for me.
For you, now, while we walk, as we all.
All right, and we'll look straight again.
I was so scared before, but I'm not scared anymore. I can hear the angels calling my name.
My time here is over, I have to go home now.
Please, don't drink and drive. Just like a star across my sky, just like an angel of the page, you have appeared to my life. Feel like I'll never be the same. Just like a song in my.
We just want to thank you all for watching, and this video was to bring awareness to drinking and driving.
Thank you all, very, very, thank you very much. I think I asked you before we viewed that video, was it good or something like that? But I'm gonna tell you what, I want to applaud you all because I think you've done an admirable job of making the community aware and keeping them aware. And to all the participants that participated in the making of this video, I want to thank them, and let's all give them a round of applause, please. Very good job. Very good.
Thank you.
Good job, good job. So you, you saw that video, don't drink and drive. If you drive, don't drink. And if you drink, don't drive. Thank you very much. Uh, anything else to come? I'm sorry, Jeff. Yes, sir, Mr. Sangerson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Assistant Chairman, members of council. You're all assembled. Uh, in a, an effort to start the year off, uh, on a positive note and bring awareness as well as togetherness to the county, Summer and I have wa- looked up national holidays, and I don't know who all are aware, but I was just made aware that January is National Walker Dog Month. So we have concocted a program on Wednesday, January 26th, at 3:00 PM, in order to bring awareness to animal shelter as well as dog walking. We're gonna have a dog walk from 3:00 PM from the Animal Shelter Center, probably out to, um, Easler Highway and back, just to, um, bring camaraderie and, and dog walking in the spirit of celebrating National Dog Walk Month. That was one, so please mark your calendars if you plan to participate. If you're a dog lover, please come out with your dog if you are not, come out and support. That's Je- Wednesday, January 26th at 3:00 PM at the Animal Shelter off of Easler Highway. Secondly, on January 31st is National Hot Chocolate Day. On the morning of January 31st, 2022, in the lobby, we will serve hot chocolate from 8:30, 8:00 AM until 10:00 AM, just to, again, bring awareness and togetherness to citizens as well as employees of the county. So please mark your calendars and please come out and join us. I thank you for your attention and time.
Thank you, Mr. Sangerson. Didn't make it nowhere, thank you, thank you. All right. Mr. Jameson, you want, you want to say something? I thought I saw your hand. Mr. Jameson, did you want to say something? Council members, anything else to come before, uh, this board? If not, we will entertain a motion for adjournment. I'd like to so move in second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposers, nay. And if you're in favor, let's rise and go home.